This conference will now be recorded.
Ms. Feinberg.
Here.
Mr. Tinkle.
Here.
Okay, foreign attendance, you will, I'll tell you now when Mr. Banks comes online.
All right, and I think instead of Mr. Pierce being here today, we have one of his associates.
You yourself?
I wasn't sure what was going to be said there. I'm Lenore Breakfield, I'm Tony's partner. You want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance, smart about lead?
Yeah, go right ahead, Chris.
I pledge allegiance to America, which one day, under God, be visible, peace and justice.
Again, I'll just ask everybody if you have a phone to please turn it to silent, so we don't have phones ringing. And if you wish to address the board for the people online, you can send notice to Mr. Shoemaker. For those in the audience, there's pages to fill out in the back. Do we have any people that wish to speak?
No, I do not have any speaker cards submitted. I'll ask if there's anybody online that has any comments that they'd like to either chat in or speak up. And folks online. There's nobody who has signed up.
Now, chair.
All right, that leads us to district attorney.
Is that the first one on the agenda, the 3D? Okay, so I have some notes from Tony. On the number two, emergency order 20-213. He wanted me to know that that statement is incorrect, that it's not extending the remote part, it's extending the state of emergency.
Is the remote now extended to November 3rd from that order this morning, do you know?
Yeah, I'll double chat with him, but I knew he said that what we were doing today was okay, so I assume that means yes. The only other thing that he had on here was the look ahead, the turnover and conveyance, number one. He does not have that information yet.
Okay.
It's the.
Arborwood Phase 3. Arborwood Preserve Phase 3, and we had a settlement agreement. Basically, an easement agreement that we had, and we had provided to another engineer, and that would have been contingent on accepting.
His other comment was number four, the bid solicitation Pelican Reserve Security Services. He is reviewing that, and he will report back at the next meeting.
Did he say anything that Mr. Adams had made in contact with Lennar or the Beast Locker on the transfer of the FPL easement that contained the construction road over to us? And did he say anything about where we're at on the transfer of the main portion of the FPL easement over to us? You may not.
Is this one that has to do with, okay, so it was an old construction easement, now there's a different construction easement?
Yes, yes.
He did not give me any information about Mr. Adams, whether or not he had spoken with him at all. He did say that he is working up a budget to find out how much this will cost, and he will report back in October.
Okay, the reason I asked that, my contacts indicate to me that Lennar was here, which would be inclusive of not only the north side of the FPL easement, but the entire FPL easement. And it's my understanding what we're waiting on, and I don't understand why we're waiting on it, is a confirmation from Lee County about the park situation. You know, whether or not that's a park, or they're going to have it be a park, or whatever. To me, that's moot. We need that FPL easement, we can argue that park, linear park later. We need to get that easement or that piece properly dedicated to it. The DRI implies that it's going to be a park, so I don't know why we would have to have an authentication from the county when it, the DRI is the DRO. Why would they, why are they going to come back and do it? So that's what we're solely waiting on. I would ask Tony, drop that issue, and let's button this up and get this FPL transferred.
Yeah, and he did also say that the petition can't be filed to appoint the trustee to transfer it, if that's part of what we're talking about. And he said that he will send a memo out with the information regarding the cost for it.
Any other questions, Mr. Tinkle? I guess Ms. Feinberg, we're ready to move the engineers' report. I don't know, Danny, are you online? It's going to be a quick engineers' report.
Yep.
He said he was going to be on.
If I could add one last thing. The employee handbook, he wanted me to give an update on that also. He said that he has reviewed it, and now Suzanne Boy is updating.
If Danny comes on, we can come back to him if he has anything. So let's move to the management report.
Sure, and I just had a couple of things in here too, I just would review quickly. We talked about it, we submitted the water use permit. The combination of the permit for the irrigation wells and groundwater wells is submitted to the Water Management District. And the second meeting in November will bring the application for the state revolving loan fund, or that $277,000 for design and permitting to the three projects we discussed in the utility workshop. And that will be for the resolution and the application only approval. In February, we bring back the actual agreement, so approving the application is not approving. And we are also working for the turnover and conveyance of Matarita 4.
Hey, can you guys hear me? Steven.
Who?
Hey, this is Steven Agapi with Tetra Tech. I was on the phone when you called for district engineer, but no one could hear me. So I had to hang up and dial back in.
Okay, well, Steven, go ahead.
Hey, sorry about that, but I mean, we don't have any, you know, new updates, but I mean, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, you know, keep you guys updated.
I think the Pelican people might want to know if there's any progress made with the bidding for the Boardwalk project. And I know you're working with the other firm on that, so that's something, if you don't know, if you could check into.
No, I mean, we don't have any updates on that. I mean, we just got them set up as a sub on our end, and I think they're still working on documents on their end, so.
Any questions, Mr. Tinkle? Mr. Gepper?
Mr. Gepper has a question. Bob Gepper, Pelican Preserve, it's not really a question. Tetra Tech put on a presentation for Pelican Bonds Work Group this past week relative to the adjustable weirs and the overall picture of the water flow. And I want to give it out of the way publicly because they did a very good job. We appreciate it.
Other questions? Mr. Tinkle?
No.
Okay, thank you, Steven.
Yeah, sorry for the interruption.
No problem, we appreciate the help. We're also putting together bid solicitation for the landscape maintenance in Pelican Preserve. They'd like to have a new contract and contractors onboard in January of '21. And the same with their security services, working on the bid solicitation and the bidding for that.
Comment there also? Just in case you didn't know, because we have these now, one of the objectives of this effort, an issue, is to combine them. Services going to Castle, representing the old Lennar HUA, and now it's Pelican run. But their areas, and then we have our own areas, so we're trying to combine them for efficiency.
Unless there's any questions, that's all I can add to. I guess we'll move to the business manager update. Laura?
All right, just a quick update on our PO system. The new PO system is now live. Today was our first day, obviously, in the new fiscal year, but we started putting, we were ahead of schedule and got the software up and running live, and started putting POs for fiscal '21 in, actually, a little, almost two weeks ago. A week of '921, so we've already issued 2021 POs already. The employee handbook update, I think the one that Tony was talking about, your update for the attorney was the one that we've already implemented. There's a second handbook, and we're revamping the entire handbook. I met with Suzanne last Friday, and she has copies of the one that she and Tony had approved, that we implemented, as well as the new one that I'm proposing that we're going to implement. And I imagine there'll be a bunch of back and forth between Suzanne and I, and we're going to wait to give it to Tony until we're kind of done with our stuff, so he doesn't have, he doesn't be caught in the middle. And hoping to have it to you guys, the board, in December for you to review, and then we can hopefully approve it in January. Because it'll just take us some time to go back and forth. Suzanne's about two weeks old, unfortunately, we didn't have the chance to review it, sent her. The VASD certified, the CDO certified district officials training update. Mr. Tinkle, you asked me the last time when I gave my update about the 190, and they do not currently have any training for that. She did say that there's announcements that go out whenever they're offering new training opportunities. I am getting those. I've actually taken advantage of a couple of the things that they offered already. But they do accept everything around 189s, because that's what, that's kind of the standard for them. So I did suggest that it would be nice if they would offer something, and she said that they would take it into consideration.
Majority of the things that we have to learn from them are, would not be beneficial if they're on 189. They already found out what they can do under 189, we're not allowed to do under 190. It's very frustrating.
I agree, but there are some things in that program that I think would be very helpful. I mean, there's the Sunshine Law Review, which is regardless, there is board etiquette, board standard of conduct, things like that, that would be helpful regardless if you're 189 or 190. Just in general things as a board member, I think that would be very helpful. The mains to get invoice slash contract review, Glenn Bryan and I met with Mainscape quite a few times over the last couple of weeks, going over some invoices, Glenn's been reviewing the contract. And we found that there was some things that we were invoiced for that we should not have done, and we've been wishing to credit for those. And we're being very particular in asking them to be very specific when they're doing their invoices going forward, especially for those things that are considered other contract repairs, because they have to pay, we have an additional expense for those. So they've been all getting approved by Glenn, and we were moving forward that way. So we're making sure that we're paying for what we shouldn't be paying for.
Were these invoices that should be going to associations?
No, they were things that were supposed to be covered under the contract as part of a monthly bill.
Oh, so they were just not under an additional?
Correct, they should have, they billed them to us as an other contract repair, and it was actually things that shouldn't have been included under the contract. And then the last thing I have on here is the Tetra Tech invoice review, especially with the funds being super tight. Chris, Danny, and Tyler and I have been going over the invoices, and I have a tracker that I'm using to keep track of all the task authorizations and where we're at on those, as far as spending the, against the not to exceed numbers on those tax authorizations. I checked this, yeah, and they are keeping a fiscal year open till sometime in November, when the financials are audited. So I should have all my final numbers to be able to present to you guys in December, what I have for what we have for spending as far as fiscal '20, things that come from this. So we're just trying to be more specific, because as you know, we're watching everything really close. And especially with the SRF loans and things like that, we want to make sure that anything that we can get on that loan to get reimbursed for, that we are. And there's been a lot of questions about things that are not being invoiced properly, or in our opinion, properly on the invoices, that they're trying to slide them in under something else, and so the place is really where they should go, just because there aren't funds there, so that's what we're trying to watch.
Like what?
They're at 137% of their general services right now, and we still have two months left to go. And there was no change orders that came in. There's some things that are being put under waterway management that are actually for the leaks, and they're not putting against the big task authorization, they're slipping them in on the general invoice.
Is this additional work that we've authorized? What's it associated with?
I would have to go back and pull specifics, but yeah, I've been keeping track of the task authorizations and the amounts that are authorized. Yes, yes, I'm sure everybody in Mainscape, everybody, I've been going through, really watching that. And the nice thing with the new PO system is that it gives us a warning when you're getting, I think I'm up to 70% that we've applied against the budget for something, and I got a warning that we're getting close already. So it'll help us really stay on track and give us a good idea where we're at.
Now, are all these invoices both on the engineering or legal? Because I know a lot of, I did this, a lot of the work is at the line, so there is no upper limit. There's an estimated not to exceed perhaps.
Right, but the thing, but what I struggle with is the general one that comes in, and there's a, they have a block where they put it, and they say that it was going to be like $135,000 for you for the general services and the district engineer. We have invoices through July, which means we still have, obviously, in September to go, they're at 137% of that dollar amount already. That's a concern to me. I understand it's going to go over, but I think if they know it's going to go over, then they should. I, this has been the wrong time, I understand that, but.
You don't know what you're going to run into.
I understand that too, but if you commit to a number, and you're even showing that you're at 137% when you're invoicing us, it's okay, just give us a place saying, hey, we're not going to be able to get this, we need the extra money.
Yeah, I think what we're doing is going to slide. Move, move the budget, if it's 137, we'll make it 157.
Right, and that, but we have no way to track that. They're just spending whatever and not being held accountable. It's not just that, it's other vendors as well, is what I'm seeing. So that, that's part of what I got hired to watch, that's part of my job, and so that's what I'm doing. But that's it for my.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
To make sure.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move to billing manager report. Leslie, are you there?
Hello, this is Leslie, can you hear me?
Hi, Leslie.
Hello, this is Leslie Richtor, Victory Billing Manager. I just have a couple of updates, I've noted them on there, I'll go through a couple of the highlights. One, we did change over to a new printing service. This will help with streamlining a lot of our processes when we try to mail out penalty, late notices, and the billing statement. There's no increase in cost, the services for this new vendor remain the same. Our code red mass notification system that renewed for the upcoming year. And I've also attached a little bit of a breakdown, so you can see how many emergency calls and in general notices we sent by phone call, email, or text. These were primarily tied to boil water notices and shutdown of water throughout the last year and a half. Zenner, Zenner status pretty much remains the same at where we're at right now. Meteor Assis, who is our AMI consultant, is scheduled to be out October 5th for onsite field visit. They'll also complete their assessment and recommendation once they complete that visit. Other than that, that really sums up the bill cycle, unless there's any questions.
Hi, Leslie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My question is very simple. You still are mailing out the bills to the people who expect those to be mailed, and it's still every, every two months, right?
Correct.
That hasn't changed.
No, nothing has changed with our process. The only change is internally on how we extract the data and get that to the printer.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, I appreciate it.
I will also be mailing out, just so that you're aware, a request to update customer info form. So it will be with the billing on the November bill cycle. And it's just to obtain updated customer information. We have several customers where we have outdated phone numbers, email addresses, mailing address. So this is just the format that we can clean up our data.
And Tony did want me to say that he approved the form, and some of this information may be exempt from public records, so we're going to have to look into that.
Tony has not seen the form, but the verbiage was taken from the application of utility service that Tony did approve. So I will forward a copy of the form to get his blessing before I attach it with the next billing.
Okay, anything else, any questions for Leslie?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Public Works Manager update?
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Brian Brusheer, Public Works Manager. I'll give you some updates on what we've been up to for a while. Calaway Greens, our project over there, we do have the two structures that were leaking severely badly are now corrected and fixed. We had MRI come in back in October to fix the 48-inch pipe that was leaking between the two houses. The sleeve we requested the order to fix that had come from Canada, and it's been delayed due to COVID, but cross fingers it's here in a week or two. So we can finally get in there and basically get that totally fixed. We used some local companies, MRI, Norfolk Myers, another one called Paints and Coatings, they're excellent. They did a real good job, as you can tell from some pictures, they kind of rebuilt one of the 42-inch pipes there, which is the one you're looking on the left. We actually had to put a new floor in the bottom of one of them, because it was leaking so bad, and plus we had a sewer line running through the bottom of our stormwater manhole, which is never good. But that problem has been resolved, so if it ever does leak, it won't filtrate on, that will really have to worry about DDP, which is a good thing. An additional stormwater, with all the rain we've had up and down lately in the last two, three weeks. Gateway Boulevard, we love to flood on Gateway Boulevard, everybody knows where. This is the picture along Gateway Boulevard directly across the Hidden Links. We have two bubble ups on that side of the road. You're not familiar with it, all the water on the west side goes in the stormlanes, they come across the street, they bubble up on the east side. This area was basically bogged up, it's overgrown by 30 years, the water's not draining the way it's supposed to. We had Matt tire come out, basically, we took about the first 300 feet of this, cleared it out with the structure, the bubble ups can bubble up now, the water flows the way it's supposed to down toward a Stony Brook Outfall. As you can tell, we do have rock on part of it, some we left vacant. I like to make a suggestion to the board, that we rock it all the way down to the outfall. If you were to bad aesthetics, Glenn brought up a nice thing, we can put a hedgerow along Gateway Boulevard, so you won't see the rocks along the side of the river. By doing that, we could save on irrigation, and we wouldn't have to mow it any longer, which would save money in the long run. And it's just a matter during the dry season, you just spray the rocks, kind of like we would with any of our stormwater ponds. But this drastically helped, because now the water is not hanging on the road anymore. It is going the way it's supposed to, and now it goes along the side. Otherwise, either way, we're going to have to take existing slot out, re-slope it, because the water is not sloping the way it's supposed to. It's just 35 years of built up foam. So.
Questions? This was done a couple of weeks ago, and in that last big rain event, I think it was on a Sunday afternoon, this channel filled up, and it outwatered curved out onto Gateway Boulevard and backed into the Hidden Links entrance. What I saw was our problem is down there at that, in that middle picture, clear down at that far end. That is, in essence, a dam, and this, this thing pools water, and it just doesn't hold enough water that comes off during a real heavy rain. I suggested to Chris, instead of, the original intent of this was all to drain down toward, which you mentioned, Stony Brook Cross. The problem is with grass, basically zero maintenance over the years, that water isn't going to flow, there isn't anything you're going to do to make it flow. The only thing that we can do is, I like to, instead of, I like that they have the rock, but go into the end and put in a pipe with a form of a bubble up, take it about 80 feet to the north, and tap into the 60-inch pipe coming from Hampton Park over to on 132, and build a fluke, or build a chimney on that, dump it right in there, go to South Florida and see if we can get approval to do that, and eliminate the flooding of Gateway Boulevard in the entrance of, well, this isn't finished.
I'm sorry, my goal is to take this and finish it all the way down the flowway.
So my question is, right.
And there's already a structure there to handle all the water.
I was trying to say the cost by tapping into that 60-inch, which is only about 100 feet away, whereas the other one is probably 1,000 feet.
Well, one's going to require engineering and permits, though one doesn't.
I don't like to have engineering done on anything we do, Brian.
I understand.
I don't like doing stuff without having an engineer. Then when it comes back, I'll say here is what our stupid word you, during it, what they're allowed. I like to have stuff checked by a professional engineer. That's a request. I think we can save money by getting into the 60, now it doesn't require going and getting a, I mentioned, approval from South Florida Water Management District to be able to tap into that line. If they say absolutely not, then our only choice is to somehow create the slope to get the water to move from A to B from this point all the way down to that Stony Brook crossing. We looked at that one time ago, and that slope is so flat, it's just, I don't know how you're going to do it.
Well, because right now, we did it with a laser, and we shot it the way it is, and it's a gradual slope. The original plan is, and it's designed, to slope all the way down to Stony Brook Outfall.
I understand.
And the structure's there. We're just putting back the way it was. Either I have to put grass back the way it originally was designed, or we put additional rock. The 60-inch pipe you're referring to comes out of Hampton, and all those ponds there. I don't know if they can handle the additional water flow. That would require a PE engineer to look into that, and you want to spend a lot of money to do that.
I don't think it's a lot, right? I don't think it's a lot. It would save a lot, just the fact that we get that water there quickly. And it would be able to also afford the opportunity to bring the water that's to the south of that, the ponds, and bring it back to that location. I just don't like, we're digging down into the ground, which is defeating the idea that I am afraid that the inverted elevation of this channel here is lower than the point of Stony Brook. Did somebody shoot that?
No, but you're not going the way of Stony Brook, the outfall is another 640 or 110 feet down.
Yeah.
Then that stops, then it goes the other direction towards Stony Brook, you've got a split in the bill. So this water will come in that way, and this side here comes in that way.
But what structure down there on that side of the road is this channel going?
You have an inlet right on top of the pipe that goes underneath Stony Brook Outfall, the same thing you're talking over top of the 60?
What's the relevant elevation of that, inverted, that, top of that pipe versus this channel?
I can pull that up.
That's, that's what I was trying to find out, because based on the things that we tried to pass, there was, you'd have to add more dirt in this channel up here at this end to make it slope down to.
We dug dirt out.
Deal. I'm sorry.
We actually took dirt out.
I, I did.
It's 30 years of fill.
Yeah. I'm just worried about those elevations because of the flooding that occurred on Gateway Boulevard.
And the other area flooded, which was down there by Stony Brook. The pond comes out of Stony Brook. One of the ponds that comes across Gateway Boulevard. The wet area was so full, it came back from the pipe and flooded that section of road down there with two feet of water. Crossed it last Saturday. That's been addressed. I can't finish that until the water goes down. Because what should we really want to do on that is extend the miter and another eight feet down the wet line.
Was that a restriction? No restriction?
No. It was just all the water from the rainfall from the pond, it flows out that way. It had nowhere to go. The other thing we've been working on, Hampton Park. A lot of thinning, removing laterals at a second place. You're not familiar with that. Next slide. Sorry. I have to request, and this is prior to our new pond standards coming out. It still hasn't been coming back for the pre-bids. We've been in Hampton Park with some of that excess money we had for lateral removals. We're thinning the herd out everywhere. As we would say, let's load the next machine that gets in the water and sends them out. We've been over there for about three weeks now. So, once we're done with there, we have some of the Hidden Lakes to do as well. And hopefully by then, whenever our pond standards come back, we'll see how our bids are to see how we proceed from there. Because this is not a cheap cost. Just by doing this section of Hampton and along, you're spending about $80,000 over there.
How much?
Almost $80,000 removal cost, just to send the shelves back.
That, that raises a question. The, I sent you the notice on an addendum going out. Right now, as I read, as Tony reads, and as I, you know, the bidders read, the current contract out for bid has no requirement for lateral maintenance specifications. I sent a sample for that. I don't know that we need to necessarily go out and change the bid form, but somewhere in this paragraph B that's in our current lateral maintenance, it, it does not even mention the removal of laterals back to the dimensions that are shown on the development orders. So these bidders, good example is the pond at that country club. That lateral shelf is way beyond. Where does the contractor, one, know to remove that and, two, would be a good price for that? Because I can't find it in the...
Well, we will discuss that. And so far, I've not hit the homeowner or the owner of the Gulfport's call me concerning that pond.
That doesn't have anything to do with it.
But they're losing, we're losing sight, Brian.
Mr. Tinkle? We have a pond standard that has been approved of this board and calls for a width. Or we don't have to have anybody call. We go do it. We go do it.
But I don't have a bat time how much it's going to cost. That's because I'm afraid of it.
That's why I said, you haven't got it in the bid documents either. If you get the bid, put that in there. That's what I suggested, is a deal to cut it back. You will then know the price to do it. It's going to be a one-time price. Then, from then on, the contract for under year one, two, and three will do the maintenance to keep it at that deal. Right now, there is nothing in these specs that calls for them to do that. Nothing.
I...
The O, and that's what we agreed to when we sent the pond standards out. I go right, I'm very concerned what you're going to get back. You are not going to get back a bid because the bidders aren't going to make places to put the lateral removal costs. It's not in here.
May I?
If I'm missing it, that's, that's fine. But we, that was the whole idea is we had to ask when we were doing the pond standards. Let's go out and get a price from these contractors and what this is going to cost. The issue was, no, we're going to get the pond standards and the bid will take care of it. Well, we got the pond standards, but it's not in here. It's not in the bid. The paragraph that's in here does not mention lateral removal to the development order as indicated in the pond standards. Now, is there someplace that I haven't found? I've gone through this thing with the pine too, Tom, and I, Tom, and I believe Tony asked too. Neither one of us could find. I think we need an addendum and we need an addendum quickly to move the bid schedule back. So that these guys come in and please tell us. What we need to know is what's the cost of this thing to do? I don't...
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes?
I'd like to jump in at this point and say, the pond standards don't, do not say that we are going to remove laterals back to the original DO. Nowhere, that wasn't what the board agreed with, with those pond standards.
It's just that it's going back to the dimensions that we agreed to go with 12 feet. That was what we agreed to. That's what's in the standards.
But you're talking about removing everything back to the DO and keeping all those laterals from coming, from coming back. And that's not what the pond standard is for. I read your addendum and at this time, I do not think that we need to add that to the bid. I think we need to let the bids come back and let Brian help you and then go forward from there.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Ms. Feinberg is not going to tell you anything.
Yeah, Ms. Feinberg, you see, Mrs. Flaherty is also looking to make a comment.
Yep. Thank you. Are we checking water quality before we do any of the laterals? Just questions?
We will when pond standards come out. I have two, three times for the pond stand.
All right, thank you.
Why are you the opinion? The pond standards aren't out? They're out. We proved them.
Talking to the new ones that we come back, as far as wanting to remove laterals behind houses. We have to go by the three ponds against by water point as well.
I think we're getting into the issue that the pond standards committee get briefed on, and that was the implementation issue. I'm not talking about implementation. I'm saying what the standards said.
Correct.
Then we were going to follow the standards and those were adopted. We are, we are, I'm not planning on changing those.
And we are implementing those while we...
We are.
We're attempting to buy this and acquire this contract because we're not telling the contractors to take it back to the 12-foot. We haven't done that. We've not done that.
And, and that was what I was told we were going to do. I didn't want to do it this way. I wanted to have it done before we did the pond standard. So we knew what the cost was going to be. I guess what I'm not getting across is if you, this, as you've got it without an addendum, you are not going to get a price from the contractors for the cutting of the laterals to the 12-foot as required by the pond standards. Because you don't have it in here. Is that correct? I don't believe it's in here.
I have to go look at the contract. I don't have it from me.
Now, the rubber will hit the road on the 15th.
I'm not going to be happy when it is, or you guys are going to be. As far as I'm concerned, I've given you a very good definition of what is wrong in these. Not got a response about adequate addresses the issues of the pond standards. I just proved approved. And as a board member, I'll pull my patience out. It's not going to last very much longer. Because I'm going to ask for changes to be made.
Do you want to make a motion now?
Yeah, I'll make the motion now. I made the motion that an addendum be issued in the format that was likely reviewed by Tony. He didn't have a problem with it. That changes the specification so as to comply with pond standards as they currently are written, so as to get a price. We're going in the same place. I'm, I'm not trying to argue with you on that because you and I agree of where we're ending up. My point is, I am sick and tired of putting out standards and doing stuff. It's like throwing out a damn boomerang and not thinking it's going to come back and hit you. We're not paying any attention to the dollar value of the stuff we're writing. I tried to say that when we were doing the pond standards. This is the first one. We learned it just with the shocking number you just gave out, the $80,000 for Hampton Park. I, I'll bet we bid, like I said, to do the other laterals. And I have our 65 ponds. I'm going to guess 45 of them don't even have a D because they're basically non-existent. But there are others that do have them. The one at the club is one. What's the dollar value of that? I'm going to guess maybe another 25, 30, 40,000 bucks. But then, what's it going to cost to keep it at that in years one, two, and three? There's where, I think you and I totally agree. That's where the...
Mr. Tinkle?
It's a lot of money. So I, my motion would be to issue an addendum as soon as we can in the paragraph, revised paragraph B to the aquatic maintenance contract to include the removal of laterals to the dimensions that we previously agreed to and as cited in the bid schedule as 12 feet.
I have a question.
Ms. Flaherty has a question.
You said Tony agreed.
Yeah, Tony's looked at this.
All right, but Tony's not here. I would like to have you table that until Tony's available to answer the question.
The visit, the visit.
Well, because Tony's not here.
If you want to make the motion to be delayed, the bid opening so as to allow that, I don't give a moment that. I think the bid opening needs to be delayed until we get a resolution of this. The other thing is the contract that says this is not the form of agreement that the attorney has given us. I don't know how that...
My understanding is that Tony agreed to your format, but he didn't necessarily agree that that line, the language in that addendum had to be added to the bid specification. He just agreed to the format.
I talked to him and I'll be glad to defer it. But you're going to defer it. You're going to have to defer the bid opening also.
And Madam Chair, if you want, Flavia is, is on the line. She was the chair of that committee and she may have something to interject into this discussion. You want to allow her to make a comment?
Absolutely.
Flavia?
Good afternoon, everyone. Actually, that same question that Ed asked, or I guess that interpretation also came from Jim. He did reach out to me about a week ago, I guess, when he had a meeting with Brian and Elle. And, and, and he stated that, you know, everything was going to be removed by the DO. And I told him, there's nowhere in the documents that we, we agreed to that. And there's nowhere in the documents that it states that. I went ahead and I called the other members of the ponds committee. And everybody agreed that that was never the discussion that, and to the point that somewhere in the document, I believe somewhere on page four, I don't have it with me right now, but even states that, you know, because you are going to have denials that eventually, you know, they will be able to be approved, but only if you meet the requirements. So for sure, the intent of this document, it was never to have full removal of laterals that exceeded or that are not listed on the development order. That, you know, when Jim brought it up to me a few weeks ago, Brian probably can't tell you whatever one was the date that he met. That is not the intent of the committee. That is not written in the document. And that was, you know, it did not come from, from us.
Got a motion?
I, I don't know what the Flavia is looking at, but I'm looking at page four of the pond standards as approved. Requirements for removal of laterals for ponds where laterals exceeded the requirements. And it specifically indicates that those will be cut back to those dimensions. Any remaining laterals succeeding, whether they've been removed, must be maintained. They're not by date 12 feet. That, all of that, that is not in the specification. It's in the lateral standard, so I totally disagree.
Wants Tony come over there?
He'll be here at the next meeting.
He won't be here next week either?
Oh, he's here. He's just out of hearing.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But they're opening the biz on 12, 15.
15.
So he goes back to the week.
Is there any way we could help? A meeting, this is Feinberg next week with Tony. Just a little meeting?
No, really, if you're going to make any changes, it needs to be done before that because you have to notify the bidders as an addendum, as Mr. Tinkle stated, and extend the bid date out. So if you're going to make a change to add that language, then you would have to send it out to all the bidders, give them probably a couple more weeks to look it over and to extend the bid date out to him and the pond manager.
Well, I, I think the thing that I'm looking at is, if that goes out, let's go 65 ponds. You're going to find out real quick, like, there's not that many ponds that have to have laterals cut back. But there are ponds that do need laterals cut back, and the one at Central is a good example. If I am a bidder and I come in, how am I to maintain that pond at 12 feet when it's out there right now, 42? How do I do that? Look at what the program for that is a one-time maintenance to achieve compliance with policy. As I'm reading, it's 12 feet.
Brian, do you see any need to delay having the bid opening?
No, ma'am.
Then I think that we, we have one supervisor that's wanting to change a bid, the bid specifications. And if his request failed for a lack of a second, I think we just move forward with the bid opening and, and see what we get back. We'll know what the prices are when we, when that bid opening occurs. I'm not in favor of, of the addendum. So I, I can make a motion that we do not add an addendum to this and delay the bid opening. That's my motion.
Second a motion?
So we have a motion, a second? Mr. Guy, that was a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you clearly.
Yes, he seconded.
Yes, okay. Well, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, call the vote. Ms. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes three to one. Bid will continue. And maybe there'll be an opportunity to make adjustments to it after those numbers come in. Okay, Brian, you want to continue with the bullnose plant replacement?
Yeah, so the bullnose is up and down Gateway Boulevard. Since I've been here, we've kind of noticed we had a lot of overgrown stuff constantly going down here, stormwater. We had a lot of trees planted probably within two feet of this in particular one here. We've kind of cut them back. What we're going to do is bone nest. It's going to concrete the last 10 feet of these. It's for safety issues too, because now you'd be able to look around. If you're trying to turn left or turn right, you'll be able to see more oncoming traffic. Two or three of these we did do, of course, with the roundabouts are out. I'm not going to follow them because, of course, the roundabouts will take a lot more out. But basically from Griffin going toward Daniels, there's three or four of these that we're going to concrete end them. Just keep the different pine straw and everything else out of the stormwater system because it is costing us, folks. Every time I drag a back concrete out, it's $175 an hour. For one week, I have it almost $9,000 to constantly keep cleaning the same things over and over. It just makes no sense. And most of these, we found out, are pine trees. It ain't like it, they were big oaks or nothing. So we just went ahead and took some of these out. And now that they're out, we're going to have bone nests come in this month and start concreteing in these bottlenoses. Basically, it'll help with definitely the stormwater system. So we're not constantly keep doing the same thing over and over and over. There's a few pictures in here we did. Like I said, there's not many of them. If the pool, Tim, are you a pool guy?
I have questions.
I totally disagree putting concrete there.
We are not Fort Myers. We are Gateway. We are special. Okay?
Okay.
We come down Daniels, it's cold. We come down 82, it's cold. We come into Gateway, it's warm because of all this plants and things. And to take it out and put, like they do on 82 and Daniels, it just doesn't have that same... This is what people moved into Gateway because they came into, start using my voice. Because they came into this beautiful area, okay? It's an entity of itself. It is Gateway. And I think that doing that will destroy it. I think there's got to be some kind of plant that can be prepared that...
If you prefer, we can do grass. Because down by the high school, there is one section at the end of it is grass. Then the worst part you got is the mainscape blows the grass in the stormwater. Now, pine straw, but it's grass. If you'd rather have grass on the end of them, as a stormwater manager, I'll take grass before I will the pine straws and the needles and all that. If you don't want concrete, that is the other option. But to me, I have to keep stuff out of that stormwater system.
I do understand and I know that's the easiest solution. However, I don't think it's yet done. it's yet that aesthetic solution for Gateway, because Gate, I have said Gateway is special.
If you don't want concrete, you all want grass, we can do grass.
The only problem with grass is now you gotta run irrigation lines down, and you gotta mow it, and crack flipping, scrap. This is good engineering, and good engineering always, always goes better than a study.
Is the reason that the county and the city will do the bottlenoses that way? For one thing, if somebody gets the curb and goes over anything else, and, or an additional for landscape reasons, and like Mr. Tinkle said, you get your gage and everything else out of that, you will save money in the long run.
But we're not Lee County, we are Lee County, but not one of us, we are Gateway, and Gateway is special, and I'm gonna say it again, it is special.
But that doesn't mean we violate it.
But it's still, this is the way people moved into Gateway, to, they saw this, they been seeing the same thing as they saw along Daniels or eighty-two or-
If you had somebody come to you and say something, I don't have a soul. What I have people coming to me saying, one, why are you spraying water in a median to grow grass that is causing all of our water problems to begin with, that they're out on the road? It's, it's an endless cycle. The only thing my question is, or question is asked, what is the white paint, is that a reflector?
It was there, to indicate, because there was trees there on the end. They'll be yanked out when we do it, and those, those stumps aren't come back, because they came back with stump grinder, they cut them down. So I mean, the whole idea was, like I say, is a concrete the last ten feet of those, and there's like three or four of them that we're planning on doing. Like I say, the roundabout will have it, when you see the roundabout done, you can go down here and see how they did that one, and it's safety issues, it's designed that way.
And it's a very cold one. It's not the warm look of Gateway. And I'm just gonna, I'm just putting it out, that's my opinion, and that's been an opinion of a couple other people that have talked to me, I'm just telling-
You paint the bullnose, just paint it.
I paint whatever color you want, paint white, yellow, green.
I, I understand where Danny's coming from, but this, that engineering issue, it's been a nightmare here since day one. I, I just don't see any other. Where engineering meets aesthetics and aesthetics loses.
I will listen, how folks wanna vote, we can do it either way. If you don't want con, nothing's happened yet, so you got time, but if I need to know now, that's why I call a guy off, so we don't start concrete two weeks from now, because there is a P O cut to fill it. If you don't want it, let me know now.
I'm, I'm happy with what you're planning, because I'm more worried about flooding. That's my opinion.
Mr. Guy, any comment?
Nope.
I, I guess if I make a motion, no one's gonna second it anyway, but I just totally think that's gonna be a very terrible look for Gateway, and I'm gonna state that, hopefully about enough so that it's on the-
Julia? And I have to say that the, I'll also say the engineering overrules, because this is getting water off the road and improving the line of sight, so it's really a safety issue with us on getting that standing water off road.
I'd love to. There's other ways this could have been done, but a long time. It's wait, you, you got what you got, you inherited it.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, this is about the only way I see that it could have been done. So I, I agree.
The flagging system, then do this at the pool, screaming's good, there's red flag means no, because a lot of people are complaining, they can't see the lightning detector on top of the building. The only way you really can is cut those three palm trees next to it down, but he came up with this nice little flagging system, that orcs, people drive by and they see it, they like it, so kudos to Tim, I kinda liked it, it worked out.
Can I talk about the pool now?
Sure.
Let me get to my notes.
Okay.
All right, pool opening. All right, I know you're following Lee County, when was the last time you talked to Lee County?
Last time I talked to Lee County was about three weeks ago.
Okay, I called them today. All right, you know I do check up on things, okay? According to lady that I talked to, very pleasant, very nice lady, informed me that this is gonna be addressed at the commissioners meeting on Tuesday.
Awesome.
Okay, so I'm giving you a heads up that, this is what she told me, she informed me to call her back on Wednesday.
What's going to be?
Well, here's the issue. The governor went to phase three. Phase three consists of bars opening, restaurant openings at fifty percent capacity and all that. Swimming pool came up about us putting all lounge chairs back out. Basically, you're violating your six-foot perimeter, because you're putting them all out, the sunbathing and everything. Right now, we're still following Lee County slash the CDC guidelines, it's just forty-five minutes of swimming, pretty much people come do their laps and then go home. Occasionally, we allow people, there's so many or less, they stay up there longer than that, but they're in the pool with their exercise, and we're not running anybody out. And this Flaherty brought it up, and I said, well ma'am, we're kinda following CDC guidelines. If that changes, I'm glad to have the chairs cleaned and put back out, but until then, we're kinda, I don't wanna get us in a lawsuit where somebody comes back to us and say, well, you're not following the CDC guidelines. So I know the governor Saturday passed that level three, which is additional stuff, but it really didn't mention swimming pool.
Can you say there's a meeting?
The commissioners, I have a meeting on Tuesday, and she said, I believe that the-
This, this'll be a, issue that we're talking about.
She believes that it is.
We've solved all the world's problems, I guess.
So I just figured I-
If it is, please let me know as soon as you find out, I'll be glad to have the staff go up there and start cleaning chairs and-
You know, I mean, how many people do you allow in the pool at a time?
Right now, you're running twenty-five to thirty.
Okay.
So if you went to half, which is now, if they follow new guidelines, okay, you're up to maybe fifty.
The other thing is, there's no food or drink. I would like the sign to say that you can bring in a water bottle, because when people do swim, I know that when I swim, after I swim, I do like a sip of water, I'm tired, I kinda swim fast.
The reason the food or water was there is because we had a vending machine there. What we'd find out, people grab their stuff and just make a messle over there.
I just-
And it's like, okay, and I can dress the town, water bottles are fine, some of the people do, and we don't say anything to them. There's gentlemen who do laps every morning, they do their water bottles, and everybody says over to them. What we were running at is, most time there were families, younger kids come up there and they have a picnic and the stuff be left in mess, mom wouldn't clean it up, and she just leave it what it was and walk on. And it's like, okay, whatever tracks or gets wet goes into your storm drains, there's little drains up there by the pool drains and everything else, but we've cleaned all that too, so I had Ryan up there for the last couple weeks pressure washing, and clean all the drains out so it only flows off the pool, but I'll let the town know about the water bottle.
Yeah, just water bottles, I figured they're usually capped and this way.
That's easy effects, we can solve them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Griffin Drive Plant Replacement Program, this is one of Glenn's things that we were doing, up and downs, Griffin down here, total magnolia and all that, change the plant program out. Kinda changed them out to, I'm not a guru, but they look good, I thought. Couple photos of that. But one thing I have on here is a regular agenda item, Chris has it, it is MRI who did our two storm structures over there in Calway Greens. I have a submersible sub lined up in Basin Five. And what that is, is since the pipes are full right now, we can send a submersible sub into those, it's an R O V that checks our pipe source. There's over four hundred pipes in Basin Five, to be honest with you, four twenty. And he will check them for any sediments filled up, the ends are blocked, sometimes the minor ends, when the ponds get filled up, then I'll get a report on how much it's gonna cost to base, and sometimes what they find with these also, you have expansion joints that come loose or anything that we might find in structures. But the best time to do it is October, November, while the ponds are still up and everything's full, is that thing just goes through it.
Chris, have all of the storm sewer in Basin Five, what was the magic number we were using, forty percent, twenty percent?
Forty percent.
Forty percent? Have all of the storm sewers that were identified as the last TV deal, have those all been addressed?
That was all completed with the initial two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar expenditure, then they added another hundred-thousand dollars to finish those in Gateway Greens, and that one was all completed.
Well, my question is, in Basin, the rest of Basin Five, beside Gateway Greens, have all of these storm sewer segments that were over forty, have they been cleaned? In other words, I hate to see you put the camera in there and have it cleaned.
Well, here's the beauty about the camera, he only charged me so much per pipe, it's actually cheap. So then he don't give me a report of what I really need to clean away. So the beauty is, is all the pipes in Basin Five will be inspected, whether it's a major pipe or small-
You have that list of the ones that had twenty percent gray.
Yes, he gave me that from work, and those were pretty much done before I got here, I saw.
And then the other, the other one was, we had that problem coming out of, I think, Daniels Preserve with that famous, what was it, forty-eight, we couldn't find the-
We don't wanna find the end of it.
We're gonna find the end.
Yes, sir. The beauty, the beauty is with MRI, what I like about them around the north Fort Myers, they're also, they put divers in the water if they have to, but with this nice little submersible, he'll go through every one of these pipes, he'll find the end of the pipes, then he'll give me a detailed report on a U F B, now, as you speed the discs, but everything, and break it down, what's on cost, what pipes need to be cleaned, what he suggests, this is, the sixty-three thousand's just a camera all of it.
When, when we got to the end of that pipe, what did the, I thought it was submarine, what, what did it run into? I, I thought it was just a complete block.
Well, I was, somebody told me in Dan's Preserve, and just, they couldn't find the end of it.
Okay, because that, that's critical.
Yes.
I mean, that is a critical pipe.
We had a diver in the water, and we tried to find the end, and went out there three different times, three days, could not find, and we had talked to some of the neighbors during the drought, and they said, oh, it's out there, we saw the top of it, but-
Anybody take any mention?
I don't know, but the beauty about this submersible is we're only getting dimensions, and basically, we're only getting with Austin, and we're gonna put on GPS, because there's a lot of things that I have found since I've been here that's been buried.
Because that pipe's a critical pipe.
Yes.
And we also have the G P R unit now in house.
That's what we call it.
Trees.
But the beauty is, like I say, with this submersible, what he's doing it, once wet, we're gonna probably find things that we didn't know we had, or we'll find the ends of these that have been plugged up.
That was related to-
But the detailed report would be nicest, because then I don't wanna have to waste money cleaning stuff that's already been done. So we're gonna start with five, five is the oldest basin in Gateway District, it's the biggest also, is then three and four together are equal about what this was. The Basin Five, you're not aware of it, starts up here by the elementary school, there's all the Daniels, half the Gateway Greens, when you come in from the, we're going south, all the way over to West Links, and all the way up to the Burry, so it is a large basin. I can have it on math, but it's why we started here, because it is the oldest one. Yes, sir.
Bob, you have the public reserve, did I just hear you say you're gonna spend sixty-three-thousand dollars for Basin Five?
Just a camera.
Have you done competitive bidding? Because we've hammered, we've done everything you said, and I totally support what we're doing, but we've engaged Morris Riley, and I'll guarantee it's a third of that price.
And I can say that we bet for different people.
Did we get, did we, did we get, who's your, your ratio?
This is from MRI.
I don't know that, I just know that we did the checking, and Morris Riley was by far the cheapest that he did.
You said Morris Riley? No. It's Morris, it's Morris. Morris Riley is out of Sarasota area, and I spoke to Morris Riley.
Did a great job.
And he was busy, that's why I couldn't, and MRI was local, and he said he could, he had the thing to do it, and you need to get another quote, I can get another-
Twenty thousand versus sixty thousand.
But he gave me a, basically a price per pipe, and this is just an estimate, like I say, I don't have to use him for the cleaning, that can be done by anybody we choose and bid it out.
What do we have, do we have a, a warning without a bid?
Oh, you can go up to two-hundred-thousand dollars, hundred thousand on a construction contract without bidding.
Morris Riley give you a bid based on the footage?
Yeah.
That's what-
Take them, look for footage, yeah, pay for it's a cost.
That's commercial.
And Brian, it looks like we have an issue down here, because this is not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
I sent them. Okay, and we'll put for-
I guess we'll have to bring it back and-
Bring it back. Not many time I've never bid.
Thank you.
And you, again, you did get the listing of the ones in Basin Five, because I didn't know that we had gotten that far to do the cleaning of all the sewers and structures over forty percent in Basin Five, because it was kind of at the end of the road.
That's right, well, that lasted, where we did, we went into the ten different communities that addressed all the pipes to the forty percent block.
Yeah, it's like, yeah. Bring it back.
Thank you.
I submit, nothing is cut off. But that's all we have from public works. There was one at issue with a soccer field, but Mr. Banks is online, so.
You wanna mention anything about that, or?
We can, we might as well just throw it out there. Let me get my notes. Our soccer fields over here, last week and a half has been, I hate to say it, underwater. You're not aware of it, thanks to your lovely neighbors behind us being built, that sheet load does not go the way it used to do. So our fields get a lot wetter, especially Field Three, which is kind of the lowest field we have. Our staff has been getting some slack from parents. I was called a Nazi the other day, I've been called, what was the latest one? I hate children. These are our residents calling me.
Both of those do.
Yeah.
That must be a Nazi.
I won't say what one of these ladies was called, it's not nice to do in public, but we're trying to preserve the fields as much as possible, because if I can walk across that field and I leave tracks and splish, 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 I'm not gonna let children play on, folks. If you wish to override me, that is up to you, but I'm looking after the safety of these children. I do not have nothing against children, I have three of my own, but our fields last week and a half, due to all the rain we've had, they've been too wet. Now, my suggestion next year, and I'm bringing it back up, is I prefer leagues don't start till after October. Say it again, after October first. The reason is, June, July, August, September is your four wettest months, it is the rainy season, we'll get forty inches of rain in those four months. Come October, we're down to three inches for the month. And I know they all wanna start early, because I heard excuses, well, we have Christmas break, I'm like, that's fine, but this will save the issue, because the other day when we were leaving, we actually had people climb the fence, they're playing on the field anyway. Mark opened it up, he passed out uniforms, people came in the parking lot, and just jumped right on the fields and started playing.
This, this issue came up before, this, first I heard this, this issue came up before Irma, and that was that, that North Birmingham, that the Timber Creek berm was not built, it was not maintained to the proper elevation. Are we saying that the berm over here between the backside, the east side of the soccer and what I call where the old baseball field was a point ago, is non-existent, and we're getting water coming across, because that is not in compliance with what we agreed to, and South Florida came up with, because all their water is sheet load down here at the end of the F P L East, not up here.
I can tell you right now, is there yesterday?
Is there a berm?
White, white boots on, oh, there's a berm, it comes down from your side into ours. Kenny's List Station, I-
I mean, is the elevation of the berm proper to where their water has to get a lot higher on their side before it comes over to ours?
Couldn't see it, because there's too much water back there.
On their side?
I'll cross ours too, by the fence. It's one big continuous thing of water, and I can't do anything, and I asked Elle, she's been here, she says, yes, South was flooded up last year, water management, they're like, so.
There has to be a separation there.
Well, they're, they are required, and actually, last year, when Elle came out, and we sent it over, because we had it flown with the drone, and what really turned it up was the water was pouring over, and it was flooding the parking lot at the elementary school.
Yeah, whether that's Magnolia or the backside of the Cypress Bay, Bristol Park.
That was during, during the hurricane, and they are putting a berm up, but where some of that water from our property is the sheet load off.
That's pre-construction, correct. And it's not a post-construction, that's a pre-construction.
The road is three foot higher than our low spot, and all that water is coming down into there. We do have a berm, but I don't think it can handle a lot of water.
I think a letter from our attorney to the developer would be appropriate.
And that has not helped the soccer field, like I say, plus our drains on the field are thirty, thirty years old, it was built back in the early nineties. I need to replace them, but I don't have the finances to get it.
I think we send them a letter, absolutely send them a letter, indicating that they have to follow and C C, the South Florida Water Management, in Lee County, that if you, if you're gonna come after us for this stuff, you go after everybody else for the same thing. You seem to wanna pick on us.
Make that motion?
Yes, I make that motion.
I'll second that motion, yeah. I second the motion, but Tony wrote a letter. I second the motion for Tony to write a letter.
If you follow up on that, I can sit on what you're saying relative to this, there, if you go out there and you see your footprints, it should be on that.
Well, Tony, our guy, stripes the fields, he striped, tried to yesterday and you could see the ruts where he left behind. And.
It's too dangerous.
I spoke to Mark Allison today, he's in agreement. He understands why they're closing, he's on postponed Saturday's field. I'm just going to let flag football know that we're not going to have it for tomorrow night. If I don't have any rain between now and Monday, Monday will be fine. But just, we had too much rain the last week and a half, the fields just can't handle it anymore.
I agree.
Uh, the other issue was another group wants to practice on our fields. This is a new Gateway High School. They don't, they have tryouts at seventeenth, but they wish to start having their tryouts over here and all that. Your average field last year, and this is just scheduled play, this is not non-scheduled for people showing up and just playing on your fields with seven hundred and fifteen hours per field on an average. University of Florida says anything over almost eight hundred, yes, significant turf loss. We're between four to six hundred, which is fair to good conditions, but thinning out. I know their new high school will be built next year and they'll be on their own fields. You guys want to have another club come out here and practice five days a week after school from four to five-thirty prior to flag football? John Robinson and Mark Allison's folks hitting those fields afterward.
So there's somewhere else in Lake County they can go?
There is, ma'am, they can practice right in Lehigh where their school's in right now.
Now, as long as we're talking about this.
The new high school.
Let's get that motion. We got a motion, say, let's get that taken care of, because I agree with what you're saying. Tell them later.
Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we had a motion from Kathy for the, of Mr. Tinkle to send a letter to the developer, also the water management district about water implosion across the berm from the development.
And that was to have Tony send that, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And so we had that motion, we have a second, and I'll call the vote. Ms. Clarity, Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
Motion passed as four to zero.
I don't know that we need a motion, but I would go along with what you're saying, if your opinion is, is that we're getting dangerously close on turf management because of ours, I'd say the issue is, we told them that. Thank you.
One minute, ask another question. Now, the, the other dog park, you have that gate, is that the construction people that go through there?
Yes, what?
Are they compensating us?
What we've been doing is all of the torals that are coming out of Hampton, instead of having to pay additional money for disposal, they're putting behind that big mountain back there, which saves the district money. Eventually those latorals will dissolve and go away.
Okay, but they're.
On our property, yes, it's behind the big mound in the back.
But the tracks.
I can't do anything with the tracks until the water goes down.
But they're not, but why do they have to even, that's Hampton Park that's coming through, it's not the.
No, no, it's our contractor working for us. This is the contractor, I have an Hampton park removing latorals and to make that cost cheaper was to bring it here so halt to the dump across site, because otherwise you'd have to go to Buckingham and get disposed of it and that raises that fee even higher. And knowing the fact that Ms. Elsa does, will dissolve and just, so we put them way back in the back behind the mound.
Thank you, I just wanted to.
You're welcome. That's what it is, they're compost. All right.
And these pictures that you bring in show everything, it's a heck of a lot better to see it visually than hearing about that, so thanks for those pictures.
You're welcome.
We'll have to get a picture of the amount of dirt, the dissolving latorals in the back. And that, that dirt we use for fill and also on construction projects, so that was the topsoil from the golf course. And they asked us if we would take it and we've been filling in low areas using the.
Topsoil from the.
When the golf course clubhouse cleared and they had to take the top three feet off. They had a big bill to truck that dirt away, so I worked with Jimmy Lynn and let him come and put it over here because we needed some filter and they. Well, they did it pre-charge too, so we didn't pay for it.
Do we need more fill material?
We have a big mound right now, so I could say, I can get more if we need it.
We will, we will, that's. We have all these, this, right now, we've got a doring in Gateway Greens and they are collecting, you know, not truckloads, but a good big truckload almost every other day. For most are clean fill where the.
Ten inch water main break, use half that pile back there, right?
I'm sorry?
So ten inch water main break will take half that pile back there now. We can get more on.
A ten inch break? Is there somebody that, should I have contact to bring it over here? To drop it off or do, do, tell me if you don't, if you don't need it right now, just tell them to find it someplace else.
Ed, I just, having gone through Comcast doing a neighborhood, when they put your actual boxes in, they're going to be bringing that dirt back in to fill the holes around the boxes.
They're doing that, they're doing that as they go and putting the sod back, so they're, they're basically done. This is excess dirt coming out of those boxes. I, I don't know that they ever figured out, I was a little, uh, ticked that during the pre-construction meeting, if they needed to get rid of this volume of dirt, that issue would have come up a little earlier, we could add spaces. Uh, we have a space at the golf course back in the vitamin maintenance building, but they started taking the slurry from the directional boring and it made it wet and so consequently it's pretty difficult to move around. So the golf course stopped them from dumping the dirt, but if we have a place over here that's not limited and that we want good filler, filler is expensive.
Next, the action agenda. We have approved expansion and scope of work and additional expenditures for the Pelican Preserve Yard Drainage Program. Pelican Preserve's been working on this project for almost two years now to put the yard drains in. And the latest improvement they've had was to add a twenty-four inch concrete apron to each of three of the rear yard catch basins and one to protect the integrity of the basin and two to keep the weeds from growing up and grass growing up and not getting covered. So what they've done, you can see the original purchase order history, the original amount, and then you see the revised amount and they put in another forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars to the contract. And this was approved by PPAK.
Madam Chairman, move approval of the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, move a motion on a second, and Chair, I'll call the vote.
Okay.
Ms. Clarity.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Pye, Ms. Feinberg.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
Motion passed as four to oh. Four, two, zero. Did you get the call? We'll give you another chance. And this, this was an item that came to the board on September seventeenth, acceptance of plat, plans, agreement to provide utility easement and notice application approval of conditions for our Wood Preserve Base Three. And we've had all the issues between engineers and Tetra Tech that were addressed. We had an issue come up that was brought up about an easement going across the city road. The city had given verbal permission, the engineer requested, we have something in writing, an agreement was put together and provided to developers and engineer, which basically would provide that before we would allow any utility hookups or working water service, that we would have to have that agreement executed in writing and presented and accepted by the district.
Madam Chairman, move approval of the recommendation.
Hey, can I comment there, guys? This is Stephen with Tetra Tech.
Hey, Stephen.
Hey, um, so we got the application around September first and we haven't, we haven't approved it for acceptance yet. We're still working with Kenny and Joel from RWA and Sulzer Pump Rep to find a suitable pump for the Arborwood Lift Station. Um, also there was a minor comment on the plat to incorporate some rear yard drainage easements for the HOA. They have supplied the plat as amended with those comments I just mentioned, but we're still working on an actual pump. So the plans that they submitted, you know, that we got on around September first, um, those are the wrong pumps in the plan, so. Um, I know Tony, he had submitted that, that agreement that pretty much says, hey, you know, we'll accept everything, you know, once we're done with our review, on the condition that before turnover, you guys provide an easement for that City of Fort Myers right-of-way crossing. So, I mean, I think, I think Tony wanted you guys to review his document, um, but.
Is this ready for approval or not?
No, from our point of view, the plans and plat are not ready for approval, but Tony submitted a separate document. I think he wanted the board to, to approve, I may be mistaken, I know Tony's not there, so.
What Tony said is that he wanted to include that contract that he drafted in this, with these documents.
Correct, yeah, that, that is included in the agenda item right there, agreement to provide utility easements. And the only thing we don't have is we do not have it signed by Lennar yet, but.
So, so we're only approving, Tony only wants us to approve his document.
No, I think he's, was okay with the plat, we had a minor issue where they're talking about changing a pump out and a lift station.
Yeah, I mean, there's additions to the plat though, like he, Joel just sent me a revised plat two days ago. And, I mean, maybe you got a separate letter from Tony saying that all his comments on the plat were approved, but our, our approval's not done yet.
I'd like to table this in the next.
I agree.
Table this to the next.
Um, Russell Smith here from Lennar and he may have some comments, that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Well, I'd just like to say, yeah, I'm Russell Smith, I'm, I'm with Lennar, yes, we are in receipt of Mr. Pierce's agreement. I brought it with me so I could sign it unchanged, assuming you would approve it to go forward. I also brought, RWA brought me the revised plat as well. Uh, I wasn't, I wasn't aware, I think RWA, from my perspective, from what I was told, was under the impression that everything was done. I mean, the, the, the deal is, is that this still has to be approved by DEP and we need the GSD to sign off on the form so they can go to DEP for approval so we can begin construction. I, I guess I would ask, you know, because this is materially holding up the project, is there a way that we could move this forward and, uh, you know, resolve the pump station issue, uh, you know, before turnover? I don't think there's any chance, you know, we're, we're going to put in whatever pump station is required to be accepted by the GSD. All, all we're doing right now is just delaying things, so.
And I've talked with Kenny about that and I really think Kenny is just the make and model and performance of the pump. There's, we, we asked him to use this Sulzer pump instead of a flag pump. But is anything material, Kenny? Is anything material with this or it's really just selected?
Yeah, it's a matter of selection. We, we, we would want to get to the Sulzer pump, which is our, our uniform pump for our station. It's a matter of sizing it, that's all. Stephen, do you have any issues other than the pump deal that Kenny seems to be pleased with?
No, I mean, as long as you guys are, you know, aware that the plat was just revised within the last, you know, three days. It sounds like Lennar has that in hand. Um, we don't have any problems with that, I just wanted to bring it up, you know, you know, Lennar and RWA has been working with us to get that pump size, so I think they'll work with us even after we agree here, so.
What changed on the plat?
Um, there were a couple easements that weren't dedicated to the HOA. They were kind of just like laid out and weren't dedicated to anyone and they had some stormwater pipes that were under fifteen inches. And historically, anything under fifteen inches and according to the permit criteria manual, aren't accepted by Gateway, so they should go to the HOA and that's what Joel just submitted to me like two days ago, was an updated plat with that dedication.
This Hampton Park all over again, let's don't allow that to happen. Well, if it's not fifteen inch, it doesn't come.
If I could, I, I also want to say, let's try not, I, I don't think that the plat and the utility approvals are necessarily the same issue. Is that correct? Uh, one is.
Well, I mean, on the.
Okay.
So Stephen, I have a question, is this okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then you still think we should table this because you still need to look at stuff, is this correct?
Um, not necessarily, I mean, you guys, as long as you guys understand that, because in the agenda item, I mean, the plats and plans aren't in there, so you're just, you know, it's not like you guys are approving a certain set of plans. I mean, I'm okay with you guys approving it and then we just continue to, to work and come to a resolution on the pumps and Lennar's provided a.
I'm concerned that if we approve of it, then we're saying that everything's okay when everything is not okay and, um, that's why I'd like to table this till our next meeting.
I, but what I'm hearing from Stephen saying, I think that we could approve it, that we make it, not an approval, but a conditional approval. And that is conditional on approvals being the terms of the permit criteria manual and the plat pieces, so. Everything that we have identified as an issue rather than just delaying, and I go along with a conditional approval, but not applying it.
And, and, Chris Smith, if I'm correct, it, it's the central part of this, getting those DEP construction permit forms signed by us so you can.
That is the, uh, that is the prime critical element that we're trying to get passed is to release the DEP form so they can continue down the approval process and we can start construction. The, the, one of the wrinkles of this and the stipulation that we've agreed to is, is that Mr. Pierce has provided an agreement which conditions the final acceptance of the utilities on certain conditions being met, so there will be, uh, you know, some teeth in the matter as far as it goes in terms of accepting the utilities, but we're going to put in the required lift station that if that's the only issue that remains, uh, as far as the plat, those sound like technical issues that we can get sorted out. If we can get authorization to release just the DEP form, so the DEP can then review them and move the approval of the construction of the utilities forward, that would be a much appreciated.
And I would, I would say too, if there's concerns that we could table those portions with the plat that have the, or today approved those DEP permits because what we're approving is then to start the construction, we still have to sign off on a certification and become the operator to the easement agreement going into place will also give us a third and fourth strike at it. We have any issues, but historically we haven't had any.
You say on that? Or, no, I'm just kidding here, you say on that? Okay.
Stephen? Stephen?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you okay with just approving the DEP?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, let's move it forward, let's not hold these guys up.
And tabling everything else?
Yeah, that's good because it'll give a chance for Tony to take a look at the revised plat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Get a motion to approve the DEP permit application.
There's already, Mr. Guy had already put a motion on the table that never got a second, so let's let him amend his motion or, or withdraw it.
Mr. Guy.
Sure.
We're just going to see if you withdraw your original motion or just to amend it for approval of only, only signing the DEP permit applications for the utilities at this time.
I'll amend the motion.
Okay. We have a motion.
Not second.
A real motion, a second, I'll call the vote, Mrs. Clarity.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg.
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle.
Yes.
We get your motion passed as four to oh and we'll reschedule the plat and plans acceptance and agreement for this next meeting in October.
Thank you very much and instantly I will leave if you would like a signed version by me of Mr. Pierce's agreement with the sectionist.
We can leave it right here and leave it right here. And I'll get those permit applications.
I already did a couple of witnesses on it, then I'll bring it up.
Okay, and I'll get the permit applications to Joel tomorrow.
Hey, guys, um, Stephen from Tetra Tech, can I get permission to sign off? I don't see anything else on the agenda for Tetra Tech, unless you guys see something else.
Yeah, you've made enough trouble.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, goodnight, bye.
Next, we had, we just had two action items from Kenny, he wants to come up, it's expenditures for valve program and also emergency bypass pump.
Kenny Hall, Utility Manager, first.
Yeah, got the Thompson.
Thompson's home.
Oh, Thompson.
This is our, our third order for. This is our, our third order for a fixed Thompson pump. This pump will be placed at
Sorry, Kenny, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Is it better?
Yeah.
It's better, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
This, this, this pump order is the third of our fixed bypass pumps. This, this Thompson pump will be placed at the Matarita Lift Station. Uh, during Hurricane Irma, uh, for about two days, the utility was cut off from our section of Pelican Reserve due to the service roof that was knocked out with trees and flooding on the main entrance into the, uh, community. Uh, the, the Pelican Reserve section of our utilities is all the way in the back of the community. Uh, and we have two master lift stations located back there. One has a permanent generator. This Thompson pump will be the second one uh, for Pelican Reserve and will complete Pelican Reserve, uh, for our emergency plan. We will have, uh, two places, one vehicle in Pelican Reserve, so it will be cut off, and one, one generator to move around with two fixed, uh, secondary power sources. And this is an approved for the 2021 capital improvement plan.
Flaherty has a question.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Hall, I'd like to thank you personally for taking care of that, um, super line that was below. I appreciate that. Okay, and now I have a question. This is at, um, Matarita, I said, okay, that's in Pelican Reserve, right?
Pelican Reserve.
Okay. Does Matarita pay into this, this fund?
This is where enterprise fund.
Right, so they do pay into this into fund. I just wanted to Okay.
Kenny, you said something there relative to the, uh, access to during Irma. Uh, this dice into the issue that we're talking about, the utilities for our utility road?
Yes, sir.
Did the water from that ever prevent us from going backwards into Pelican? What I'm getting to is is that I don't require that portion of the Boulevard flooding. And so did, were we Yeah, we pull over, we, I'm talking the main entrance into Pelican Reserve. I don't, I don't, I'm talking about if we, I'm trying to think ahead here, if we get that road across the uphill easement, get into the backside of Preto, which goes, follows our easement, then we will be at our utility. But what elevation would we have to have that road? Someone's going to ask this question. Can we get that road up to an elevation that would be equal to the elevation of Gabriel Boulevard? To go all the way over to Preto, tie into Preto, such that we don't care what happens in the front of Pelican Reserve, we can go the back way to surface our utility. The elevation of that road? I don't know that one. Well, I mean, my question was, did you ever see the water go over that road? No, the trees came down. The problem was on that side, the trees all came down. We couldn't get through on that road because there was about ten trees that were down. And then, but there again, where the irrigation connections are to Preto and the storage, there's a six and an eight inch, there's a gate there. That's how we got into the community. Our plan to assume that we're going to get cut off, and we would have now to a fixed assets with a rolling generator, we could just walk across there, put a truck there, and That's one thing that we need to look at when we start talking about that road, making sure that that road is built up and up that it it provides us an all-weather access to Preto. We have three fire hydrants along that service road as well, and a force man and irrigation.
Can you speak up? I can't understand you.
I was, I was responding to Mr. Tinkle's question about the service room. Um, Supervisor Guy? Motion to approve the expenditure for Thompson.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve expenditure of the pump. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Motion passes four to O, and I'll also comment, we're buying this pump while it's piggyback on the Florida Sheriff's contract and saving about seventy thousand dollars in that way. And the next item, which will probably be very popular with Mr. Tinkle, is the utility expenditure.
See, he's actually went backwards.
Approved expenditure of thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars for the continuing long-term valve exercising maintenance program. Uh, this piece of equipment is funded by the Board Supervisor approved utility reserve draw in two thousand nine. Uh, this piece of equipment, uh, has been something that we really wanted to get into our maintenance program. Um, we had to fill in a couple of blanks before we were really able to get, uh, the staff ready for a piece of equipment like this. Uh, this is an automatic valve exercising machine. Uh, our initial estimates were a little low where the actual equipment came in at. Uh, this one has, uh, what I really like about it is it has built-in MOT signaling. It has built-in MOT signaling, uh, for when our, uh, field operators are out in the field exercising, uh, valves along main birthfares. Uh, this, this machine was also, we demoed it with the entire field staff, and it is fully integratable into our UGIS system. So what will happen is as we go along exercising the valve, we bring that information back, log it into the GIS system, and it becomes a part of our archive, so we can very easily track what we're doing, where we're going, how much of what we're doing, and setting up your own maintenance program. And this piece of equipment, you really need a really good trained field staff to really operate. Uh, this, with this, with this equipment, you can go out and do some very, very serious damage to your system if it's not properly operated. It does have a few fail-safe features on it, but there again, uh, the staff that you need to, uh, really incorporate something like this is is, we're now getting to that point. So this is almost a necessity now, uh, with our valve exercise program. Questions?
Yes.
Is, what's this pulled by? Uh, it's pulled by anything in our, in our fleet. We can pull it from the John Deere, the the Mini Cub trucks, whatever. You said, you said earlier that this was over what we anticipated. What, how much over our budget are we? Sixty, sixty-five hundred dollars? And, and what are we doing, transferring from someplace else? Yes. Okay, and the last one that is, I I'm not familiar with this company, but that doesn't mean that much. Are, is there a competitive, a competitor that has? We did Herco.
You checked others?
Yes, we did. We, Herco, which is our initial, what we initially based, uh, the estimate on, uh, Herco kind of fell apart. Uh, EH Rocks, City of Naples, City of Fort Myers, Lee County, and Charlotte County are currently their biggest, uh, they, they buy these rigs every three years. This one here, this, this rig that we got right here, it was just, and what brought the price up a little bit higher was the built-in MOT, meaning there's flashing signs on it. It has, uh, LED caution lights built into the system, so whenever it's on and running, those lights automatically will be on, which is a really nice feature for what we're using before. Those are the questions, motion to approve the EH Watch.
Mrs. Flaherty has a question.
She's waiting.
I'm trying to, you said it's coming, you're going to transfer from another account. Do we know what account we're transferring money from?
It would be the four hundred.
Thank you.
Now, motion to approve EH Watch proposal for the, uh, equipment described by Kenny.
Awesome, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and second, we'll go ahead and call the vote. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mrs. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Ordered zero to approve the purchase of a valve exercise machine. Mr. Tinkle, did I save some money doing that ten years ago?
We would have paid for it with what we're going to do at Gabriel Greens at one time.
Right.
In fact, I know you know you're going to get it, that's thirty-four thousand dollars.
And the, the same thing, you don't exercises valves, one valve is thirty-four thousand dollars to replace it. And integrating that into the GIS where it's on board, that it comes back and we can put that date on which valves are exercised and when, and report it with it. Um, it's really huge. Madam Chair, next we have the consent agenda items, which are the minutes from Stanley Brook, P-PAC, and four from the CBD and the financial report.
I want to pull C and D.
Okay. Any changes you want to make in that?
Yes, the, and see my typo arrows, errors, okay? If you go on to page, end of page, I got this. Ninety. And all the ways to the bottom, the like third from the bottom that says, Mr. Tinkle, it's not A-G-E-E-D, it should be Agreed, A-G-R-E. These are my typo errors, and I will apologize.
Before you move on from that, I have one in the middle of your statement.
Okay.
It said, uh, fourth line down, at the very end, that should be DO, not DOT.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, and then on page ninety-three, the last word is not road was, it should be roadways.
That was my other one.
Well, I, I am, I am telling you it's my typo, so I'm sorry about that.
Do you want to approve that engine order, correcting this typos?
Yes, I also pulled D.
Okay, what about D?
Okay, now D, and I understand that, I guess there's a problem here in me, so this is probably, I did state that I wanted to state it before the vote that I asked that it's the, um, in the new resolution and before the vote of the budget. The resolution twenty fifteen and the resolution twenty sixteen, that the new methodology was included. Okay, so I wanted that in attorney Pierce, and yes, it was, and I like those both in because that's why I voted no, and
What page is that?
Change one hundred and eight. Because that was the question I asked before I voted, and you remember that?
Yeah, Miss, sure, I remember that. Mrs. Flaherty, going, hey, so you just want a clarification statement that you asked if that was what the new
Right, between the vote, the motion and the vote.
So line three sixty-six, you want that added?
I want that added, right.
Okay, well, do you want to
Because I did say that I would.
I remember that.
Thank you.
So do you want us to approve that also contingent on that line?
And that's be added in three eighty-nine, too, because it's added there, too, unless that twice.
Okay, then we can make those prior to having the chair sign them.
All right, thank you.
Did anybody make a motion to approve?
No, I kind of, it goes first.
Do you want to make a motion to approve contingent on your edits?
I'm motion to approve contingent on my edits, so.
And is that motion for the entire consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
My second is also.
Unless somebody wants to pull something else.
No.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with edits to C and D, as we just described. I'm going to call the vote. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mrs. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Motion passes for approval of the minutes with edits. Signing. Okay, looks like we're at supervisors' comments. Madam Chair?
I have none.
Do you have last? Mr. Guy, any comments?
I, just one, I would like, uh, Eva Lord to, uh, provide for me, as they do every year, a final budget, uh, in paper form so that I can carry it with me when it's convenient, please. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, we'll take care of that tomorrow. Mr. Tinkle, comments?
Yeah, I just, uh, one, have we got any, uh, update or, uh, acknowledgement from Steve Bloom on where we're looking at finishing out projection?
Um, they will close out the books in November, and so he should have an idea about carry forward, you're referring to, in December, and he usually brings that in the first meeting in January.
Okay, I didn't know if he had a, had crushed enough to have a better idea of what it is right now. Okay, uh, we'll wait until we get that. The other one is Tony sent me the other day, and I don't know if he copied the other, uh, supervisors, but a notice of permit applications from Southwater Water Management District, and I found one pertinent to our discussion today in light of our good friends to the east. Uh, Timber Creek Phase Two, uh, gone through. Anybody go to, uh, see permitting and check that out to see what they're trying to, uh, pull off on this one?
I did, and it was a slight modification. It wasn't anything significant, but I'll pull a copy of it for you and show you.
Well, what I was going to do is I'm going to go back to it also.
Okay.
Uh, this deal with, uh, that Brian brought up, that's, that's inexcusable. Uh, that they have to put in a pre-construction burn, and that water should not be, if we're getting that water over that burn right now, what the heck's going to happen when they finish out? Something is drastically wrong.
Yeah, and we'll have that checked out. One of the problems with that is, is previously there wasn't a burn down there, you're right, pre-construction, that's why it came over and flooded the school.
The ballgame when they go to construction, they dig up correctly.
Well, they, uh, they are constructing that burn now and for the most thing, but we used to get some of the water draining off our property that way. But they still are, the, the wetland doesn't drain, and so it's
I was, I was a little disappointed that a key representative from Lennar, uh, was in the room and was silent during that discussion. And that's their, that's their, her baby old there.
Yeah, that is one of theirs, and I'm sure he's, I'm sure he's going to bring it up to their project manager, and I'll ask him about it tomorrow myself.
Good, good, good. I had nothing else.
Okay, Miss Flaherty, comments?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I, I listened to
No, I just made me laugh.
I just listened to many residents. Okay, basketball hoops, those go back from, um, we county, those parks are permitted again. Okay, just checking out the holes in the road over here. I thought you were going to put some kind of concrete or some
Yeah, I was going to go out and put some more bags in.
Okay, thank you. Um, we did talk about the Christmas tree that, he said, that's, I need you to talk about the Christmas event so the others supervisors can hear about it and approve of it, but let me finish my comments first.
And I'll bring the proposal. We've got a kind of a scaled down Christmas event where we've gotten some, uh, activities put together that won't be so, uh, crowded, they'll allow more social distancing, more photo opportunities, but still have the fireworks and the food trucks there, an opportunity for the children to get out and celebrate.
Parking, it's mostly meatballs, a long Yes, 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 blocking the sidewalks, okay? Can we put a no parking sign there? I know that they're going to do the roundabout, but until they do, could we turn it over? Oh, yeah. Could we ask the county to put up a no parking?
I'm sure they would. Pretty soon it's going to be a construction zone, the sidewalks won't be there.
They're going to go away soon because of construction.
But I'm just, because people cannot walk, so we got to do something so they can walk back and ride their bikes. Is there something we can do until that construction starts?
We've got about four weeks.
Yeah, well, maybe they can ask, could we ask the county just to temporarily?
I see a project manager, it's another fact, on the fifteenth, they have the pre-construction meeting, and I'll send everybody, another, that'll be online. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and they, they plan on, uh, you know, about three or four weeks after that, coming out there and starting a turn dirt, so that's close.
Okay, just because it is, they should not be blocking the sidewalk. That is not even
They ignored that since we, it's been built.
Yeah, I know, but it is a ADA, federal thing that we don't block the sidewalk because of Yeah. Okay, now, I did ask that, um, we bring that to one of the agendas about, um, you know, the lakes in front of that area where the school took all that grass out, okay, and I asked, since they're going to put grass in, that if we could look into putting some kind of irrigation and upgrading the grass so it matches the rest of the gateway, is there a possibility to do that? Also, Mayscape has stopped doing bushes at that end. They stop at Silver Lakes and they don't do any, anything. I don't know why. They are supposed to, so could we look into that, too?
I'll look into that.
Which side of the road? East side of the road or west side?
After Silver Lakes, both sides of the roads. Have you gone down there?
Yeah, after Silver Lakes, uh, you're getting into the area that
Yeah, after Silver Lakes, you're getting in the area that backs up to Hampton Park.
Right, but we have some parts of it. We have the road
Well, we have up to the sidewalk, basically.
So, but maybe we need to send a bug in Hampton Park to do their
Well, that, that was a question of the issue raised, that on the other side, we'll still own the right of way, or not own the right of way, we'll have responsibility for the landscaping of the right of way all the way to 82 in front of school, until they get done with whatever they're doing up there. But I figured out, I wouldn't plan on doing anything up there, because I hope they tear that damn thing out, but it's a joke, but at the end, I have, the only thing that I see we can do is grass. I don't know how you're gonna do anything else up there.
That's what I want.
And we had one estimate, it was about $70,000 to put irrigation and sod in there, and the issue with that is the, it's all old road base, and that's why that sod doesn't grow well up there, so I would imagine it'd be closer to $150,000 to prepare properly or
I would think that they would, they on their segment, before you get to Magnolia. I know from Magnolia back this direction, it's horrible, road base, but go in that direction, it seems like that they would be able to put down six inches of topsoil out there with the understanding that we're going to landscape it when it's over with.
Right, and we could put the proper grass
So we don't bring it to grade with
Or behind, because we have the other kind of grass here.
I'll make an inquiry of the engineer and the plans tomorrow about what they
And see if we can, you know, get some bids or information on irrigating. I mean, because we want to make that look appropriate to the rest of gateways, especially since high school said.
Kenny, be able to get your funeral flowers there, we're gonna wreck in the intersection.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I covered everything.
Okay, and I'll bring you the details on the Christmas event at the next meeting, but I think we're gonna be able to make something nice and socially distanced.
I appreciate that.
All right, that's all we've got. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. It is 4:53, new record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.